Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Thursday, June the 13th, 2024. This is the committee of the whole meeting. To start off, I'd like to acknowledge we're meeting on the traditional lands of Acadia First Nation, part of Mi'kmaq, the ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. Item number three, is there any additions or deletions to the agenda as circulated? Madam CEO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm asking for permission from council to add an item to the agenda relating to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities meeting I attended last week. Minister Sean Fraser gave a presentation on the work the federal government is doing around the housing initiative, and it just so happens the municipality released a request for proposals around housing last week. Minister Fraser stated that the federal government is looking to take a more comprehensive approach to supporting municipalities as they grow their communities. And so the RFP that we issued is exactly that. And so I'm looking to add this item to the agenda and have a conversation with council about potentially writing to Minister Fraser.
So would this go under all the new business? Probably new.
It's your prerogative, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, all right. We'll put it under new business. Item 9.2, I need a motion to add to the agenda. Moved by councillor Nick Hilton, seconded by councillor Daniel Allen. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Any other additions or deletions to the agenda circulated? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Moved by councillor Daniel Allen, who had a seconder. Seconded by councillor Patty Durkey. Motion on the floor to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item number five, is there any declarations of conflict interest? Please notify me and I'll make sure your name is recorded in the meeting minutes. Item number six, presentations. Property Valuation Services Corporation, PVSC. We have with us today Mr. Paul Beasley and Rod Tremblay. Welcome.
Thank you, your worship. Pleasure to be here again, and thank you, council and staff, for having us here today, inviting us here today, I believe. And councillor Durkey can probably confirm, I think it was six years ago, that I've been, I was in this room, and there's a few familiar faces, and I'm glad to see you again and pleasure to be here. I think we'll jump right into it because I understand time is tight, and so we're going to roll along pretty quickly, and I'm going to have Rod advance the slides here. And so I think you have copies of the presentation, and so I'll go through them quickly. And if you have questions at the end, I'm going to pass it to Rod halfway through so he can talk about some numbers to you and that type of thing. So Rod, go ahead. So we're going to talk a little bit about PVSC, who we are. We'll differentiate between market value and, or talk about market value and how it is used in mass appraisal. We'll give you some numbers. Rod will talk about the 2024 assessment role and the inquiry period, the appeal inquiry period. Go ahead, Rod. So PVSC is created under the Property Evaluation Service Corporation Act. This would be a bit of a refresher for some of you that have seen some of these slides before. And we operate under the Nova Scotia Assessment Act. We're independent, we're not-for-profit, and we're municipally funded. We aren't the government anymore. In around 2000, we moved from the government to become an independent, not-for-profit. We're governed by a board of directors. Joe Feeney, the deputy mayor of Mahone Bay, is currently the chair of the board, and there's approximately 11 board members on there. Some are municipal officials, some are elected officials, and some are independent, or not independent, but private industry appointees to the board. We have approximately 130 employees working across the province. So what we do and what we don't do, PVSC delivers an assessment role to 49 municipalities, all municipalities. By December 31st of each year, there are approximately 647,000 assessment notices that we send out to property owners across the province, and we administer the capped assessment program as well as the seasonal tourist business designation program on behalf of the Nova Scotia Government. What PVSC does not do is we do not have the authority to set the tax rates, collect the taxes, create tax policy, or provide tax relief. That's within your purview under the Municipal Government Act, but we do get a lot of questions from citizens about, you know, can you provide me some tax relief? Or why is the tax rate what it is and those types of things? But in those cases, we refer them to the municipality because those types of priorities are within your mandate. So market value. Under the Act, we are required to assess property at market value. And market value is the amount which, in the opinion of the assessor, would be paid if it were sold on a date prescribed by the director in the open market by a willing seller to a willing buyer. So in essence, it's got to be a market transaction. It can't be something that there's undue influence or non-market, non-arm's-length, such as a tax sale, a family sale. Those types of things are not considered market value sales in most instances. They can be, but in most cases, the vast majority, they are not market sales. So we only look at market value and we look at sales within the market, and that tells us where the market is headed and what direction assessment values are going. So the date prescribed by the director is January 1st, one year prior to. So if it's the 2024 assessments, role is going out January 1st of 2023 is the date prescribed by the director. So it's one year back. And the assessment also reflects the state of the property as it exists on the first day of December, just before the role going, goes out. So that's where we pick up additional information through inspections and building permits to get it as accurate as we can, right up to the date that the role goes out. So if, if just before December, our assessors go out and see that there's new garage on the property, we'll add that to the role as long as we see it before December the 1st. All right, Rod? So we use mass appraisal to determine the value of all of the 647,000 properties across the province, and mass appraisal is a process of evaluating groups of properties as of a given date, January 1st, using common data, standardized methods, and statistical testing. So we're looking at groups of properties which we break into neighborhoods. So we're typically looking within neighborhoods within municipalities. We aren't comparing properties in Cape Breton with properties in Yarmouth. We're comparing properties in Yarmouth, and we're comparing neighborhoods within Yarmouth with neighborhoods within Yarmouth. So it's all based on market evidence. We're looking at sales that actually occur in those markets in order to determine which way the markets are heading and which way assessment, you know, is moving. And we do a lot of statistical testing. I won't get into that, but it's all within international standards, and we have a whole team of data scientists that look after that. I'm not the statistical tester, I can assure you. So there's three approaches we use to determine value, and they're all internationally accepted as well, and it depends on the type of property typically. Sales comparison is used in the vast majority of residential properties, three living units or less. So most of the properties, we use sales comparison. We compare sales of like, similar, homogeneous properties within the neighborhood or close neighborhoods. We use the income method to, we determine the income a property can earn, so the potential income and the actual income after expenses, and convert net operating income to market value. So properties that are valued or are transacted typically because of the cash they can generate or the, or the income, such as apartment buildings, such as office buildings, such as hotel motels, those types of properties are valued on an income basis, and we do get income data from those property owners in order to determine what the market is doing as far as income, profitability, those types of things. As you can appreciate during COVID, hotels, motels weren't doing so good. The income was down, values were down. We were seeing a rebound in that. Thirdly, we use the cost method where we calculate the land value and then, you know, the cost to replace the building and deduct for depreciation. So a lot of the industrial-type buildings, warehouses, those types of things, it's what's the value of the land? What would it take to build that building? And then sort of take out depreciation. Depreciation can be tricky, but you know, there's, there's data out there, and we use data information services across North America to determine sort of what's happening in the marketplace for industrial properties. All right, Rod, we'll go to the next one. The important dates, the base date, which I mentioned, which is the date prescribed, which is one year back, was for the 2024 role, as I mentioned. It was the base date, the value on January 1st, 2023, based on market sales that we analyze that occurred within, you know, the year heading up to that. So in 2022, we look at all the sales that occur, and on January 1st, we say, here's the market value of this typical property based on the sales that have occurred. There's also the state date. I had mentioned December the 1st, whereby we collect all the data on the property. So the characteristics and physical state of the properties as it sits on December the 1st is what we endeavor to have on the role. So we have our assessors out inspecting and viewing properties all through the fall with a, with a big push towards December the 1st to make sure we get all the data we can on the role. All the building permits, which come from your planning department and building inspectors, load it down through our, the PDX system. We try to capture as much of that as we can leading right up to the December the 1st. We deliver the notice in the middle of January typically. Last year was, or for 2024, it's January 8th. And any appeals of their assessments, of property owners' assessments, they have the right to appeal within 31 days. This year, we would have had to receive the appeals by February the 8th at midnight, 2024. Next year, it'll be that specific date at midnight in 2025 for next year's role. So each year, it's, just depends on the exact date that we send them out. So I'm going to hand it over here to Rod Tremblay, and I'll let him walk through the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you, your worship councillors and members of the gallery for having us. I'm Rod Tremblay, Assistant Director of Operations with PVSC. My first slide is a, often a popular topic, the capped assessment program. So PVSC administers the capped assessment program on behalf of the Nova Scotia Government, Section 45A, the Assessment Act. The program places a cap on the amount of taxable assessment for eligible residential property and can increase year over year based on the Nova Scotia Consumer Price Index. So this is often a bit of confusion with property owners around cap, that the capped assessment program, capped assessments are legislated to increase annually. They increase by the Nova Scotia Consumer Price Index, which is provided to us every fall by the Department of Municipal Affairs and Housing. This year, the cap rate for 2024 assessments is 3.2%. So all properties that were capped last year that have not had any physical changes, so remain in the cap program, continue to be eligible, have had their capped assessments increased by 3.2% for this year. So that percentage can vary year over year depending on the CPI that's provided to us, and we're legislated to apply that to the capped assessments throughout the province. There's a sample below of a relatively straightforward assessment notice. Many of you would have something similar in the mail in January. So in this sort of hypothetical scenario, this property has an assessed value of 442,500. So that's where we're arriving, based on that combination of the base date and the state date, as Paul mentioned in the previous slides. So market value as of January 1st, 2023, based on what was physically sitting on that property as of December 1st, 2023, so 11 months later. What that allows us to do is be able to capture new construction as we go through the year, so that new construction is, is captured on the assessment role in the following year. This property has a capped assessment of $347,500. We don't know from this slide where that number comes from. We know that it's based on a previous year's assessment. So looking at the relationship between those two, there's just under $100,000 in sort of difference or cap advantage, we would typically say, in, in that scenario. So what that likely means is that this property owner has owned that property for a number of years, and that figure is based on a previous year's assessment brought forward by the Consumer Price Index annually, assuming that there's no physical changes to the property. So the taxable assessed value, what's indicated on the bottom right corner of everyone's assessment notice, this is a straightforward notice with one tax class on it, is always going to be the lower of the two numbers. So in many cases, for nearly 80% of property owners, residential property owners in Nova Scotia, that number is your capped assessment. So in this case, it's that $347,500, and that's the number that's available to the municipality to then levy the tax rate on. So it's a really important sort of piece of information. I'll touch on it when I do the numbers here in a moment as well as to what that means from a municipal perspective. So just want to cover a little bit of the assessment role activity specific to the District of Yarmouth for last year. So this is information we would have used to help us to prepare the assessment role for 2024. So we reviewed 225 building permits in the District of Yarmouth. We had 487 property transactions, so that would be all property sales. We review property sales to determine if they represent market value, and as Paul mentioned, if it's determined that it was an arm's length open market sale, we would use that sale in our reassessment once we correct the, any, any data and make sure that the data reflected on the account reflects what transacted and what was sold, and we use that relationship for our reassessment. What wouldn't be included, as Paul mentioned, is something like a tax sale, bank foreclosure, transfer between family members, estate proceedings, a separation. There's many, many transactions we receive from the deeds registry that are not representative of market value, but a deed is transferring for one reason or another. So we review those and make that determination. We also received 160 appeals in 2024. So we, given the timing of this, this presentation, we wanted to update that number. We had 127 appeals in 2023, so the number was up slightly this year, very consistent with the rest of the province around when we see an increasing property market, as I'm sure everyone in the, in the room is aware, especially on the residential side. What we see is consistency with the number of appeals. Of course, if we put the assessments up a little more to reflect the market, we often see a slight increase in the number of appeals as well. We're still under 2% province-wide for appealed properties. Oh yeah, I'm driving this. So total assessment role numbers broken down by class for the District of Yarmouth. So in 2023, your residential assessment role was just under $1,972.7 million, and this year, there's a 27%, over 27% increase to 1.244 billion on total residential. Underneath, we've indicated total residential with cap. So that's increased from 887 million to 964 million. That's an 8.6% increase. So this is a really interesting sort of stat from a municipal perspective around the difference. So although we saw 27% market lift overall, so reflecting this really hot market up to the end of 2022, so remember, we're reflecting the market as of January 1st, '23, so sales up to the end of 2022 would be included in this reassessment. The market was still quite hot through the COVID time period at that time, and we were just starting at the end of that year to start to see a little bit of a cooling of the market. So we don't know yet where this, where next year will go, but certainly it was a really steady increase in reflecting that, those market conditions. The 8.6% is the change to taxable assessment that is available to the municipality because of the cap program. So the more properties that come onto cap, so when the CPI and the market increase that's applied to assessments is greater, more properties as a percentage of all the properties come onto cap, so that changes the amount of taxable assessment available to apply that residential rate to. So the increase to taxable assessment, that's total residential with cap, 964 million, 8.6% increase. Commercial assessment went from 101 million to 108 million overall, which was a 7% increase, and the commercial taxable increase was a little bit larger than that at 12.7% overall. So I'll just talk briefly on some, some sector highlights sort of outside of the residential world as well. I think most folks are quite familiar with sort of the direction of the, the residential property market up to the end of 2022, but looking at some of our commercial properties that are valued based on the income they produce or on cost, as Paul mentioned. So despite rising costs of materials and labor due to inflation, commercial development did continue throughout the province. Many of our business and industrial parks continue to see significant market growth, especially in warehousing. Apartments continue to be a strong investment. This is reflective of the increased demand for housing that we're seeing throughout the province of Nova Scotia, as I'm sure everyone is aware, and the pressures on that sector continue to make it an attractive investment for property investors, both buying new, both new construction and remodeling of existing buildings. We saw steady tendency in the retail sector, so we're seeing some COVID recovery, but not a lot of change in retail overall based on what we get reported for rents on the retail side, and we're still seeing relatively flat market for office buildings, reflecting some of the changes that we've seen in workplace requirements. So natural disasters were a large part of our work, of which Paul and I were actually directly involved with PVSC's response, both to the wildfires in Shelburne County and the municipalities of Barrington and the District of Shelburne, as well as throughout HRM. As everyone's aware, there was a number of properties that were total losses, and we worked directly with those affected municipalities following the fires to make sure that the assessment role was accurate and contemplated the effects of those fires. So our 2024 assessments consider the impacts of the 2023 wildfires and the flooding that occurred in July of 2023 as well, and we work directly, as I mentioned, with the impacted municipalities to share information and communicate with property owners. We continue to monitor the affected areas closely for market trends to determine any stigma or any future reductions that need to be applied to those areas for the effect of those fires on the property market. We want to reflect the market. What was challenging this year is because our base date precedes the date of those natural disasters, we don't have any market evidence available to us to determine the degree to which there's a stigma applied to those areas. So we look to international best practices to make that determination for this year. So I'll very briefly touch on the inquiry and appeal period, given the timing of, of this presentation. We are outside of the appeal period now. I think Paul mentioned that earlier. It ended February 8th of 2024. So we mail assessment notices every January for those councillors and your worship in the room. Certainly, it's always a great idea to remind constituents to keep an eye on their assessment notices. That's the opportunity, if you have a question, to give us a call and, and ask the question. We're always happy to. We have all of our assessors on our phone system for 31 days in January during the appeal period. We typically see an increased call volume, and the best thing you can do is give us a call, and we can talk about whether it's appropriate to file an appeal or whether it's something that we could just sort of discuss the reasons why the assessment has changed or the cap has changed in some cases, and, and why that is. And sometimes the call can end there and everybody ends up a little bit, a little bit better informed, so we're happy to do that. And of course, we have a year-round service desk and web inquiries for property owners and municipalities. So Paul is municipal account manager, so he's a direct primary contact for any municipal staff. Any councillors can go directly through municipal staff, and it will reach Paul, and then it's triaged into, into operations or into my world as needed. And then we also have assessors on the phones sort of regularly throughout the year to answer any property owner inquiries as well. So just, these are the two phone numbers here. These are available, of course, on our website as well. Service desk for municipal staff and inquiry for any other property owner or agent for property owner. So thank you for your time in listening to our presentation, and I think we'll open the floor. I know you're, you're pressed for time in the meeting, but we'll open the floor to any questions as well.
Councillor Patty Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, gentlemen. A couple of questions. First of all, I want to just confirm that you're only allowed to appeal assessments. You are not allowed to appeal once the tax comes out. It's not for you to be doing at that point, correct?
Correct. So that's prescribed in the Assessment Act, that 31-day appeal period. So there is some, some provision for a late appeal up to 60 days, but that's really the outside of the appeal period. So really, you're correct. It's that 31-day period where you're able to call. An important component of that that I would touch on, though, is that we can always make changes for the next assessment role year if we determine it's necessary. So even if you've missed the appeal period and you have that, that sort of sticker shock or that question at tax bill time, it's still possible to call PVSC and discuss it, but it may be a discussion that affects next year's assessment rather than the current assessment, because when we're outside of that appeal period, we don't have a legislative ability to make changes unless it was an error on our side. But if it's, if it's something that relates to value, so you know, you disagree with the market value of your property, feel it couldn't be sold for that amount, then that's something we can take a look at in detail for the following assessment role year at any time during the year. And we encourage property owners to do that. It's, it's the best kind of conversation that we can have, but the appeal period is that specific 31 days.
Okay, thank you. Also, are you anticipating, because of the market as it is now, that assessments could go down this year? Does that ever happen, that assessments go down once they hit a high?
So I, I don't think I'm in, in a position to comment on the results of the reassessment yet. We will follow the market for next year. We have seen some, some flattening of the market year over year, as everyone is likely aware, but it would take a significant change in the market to, to result in us making a recommendation to reduce assessments. So if the market evidence was there, then we would follow it. We follow the market. So, but in, in so saying that, it's always retrospective by one year. So just as the increase applied is retrospective by one year, any decrease or any slowdown is also retrospective by one year. So it sort of goes both ways, and we have to hang our hats on that base date, as Paul mentioned. Does that, does that answer the question?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
No problem.
I think, I think the other thing is, when we do get some appeals, councillor, or even when we get phone calls, they say, I've made, I've not made any, any changes to my property. Why did it go up? It's the market that, that we're talking about, but also, you know, it's, we're looking at that year behind as well. So, you know, I know that you would be, a lot of your constituents would probably say, you know, I didn't do anything to my property, so why did it go up so much? It's, it's us following the market from one year ago. And as Rod said, if it's determined that the market's going down, we will make those changes just as we do when it goes up.
What I really notice is for people, new people, they don't have the cap. We're thankful for the cap, but we know that's really hard on new people coming here because they buy a house, they're assessed at a certain value, and then they get their new appraisal, and their appraisal is higher than what it was when they receive, when they get their house. So therefore, in the end, their taxes are higher, and of course, they do not, they are not capped. So it's, it's really making it challenging for new people who have bought in the area.
And you're absolutely correct about the transaction. And so if it's a market transaction, there's no family relationship between parties, that would reset the cap. But those folks, if they qualify, so if they're resident in Nova Scotia and they qualify, they will be capped, but they would be capped on whatever their assessment is in the year following their purchase. So if you purchased in June of 2023, you would not be capped in 2024, but next year, you, you potentially would be, as long as it's of some advantage to you. So if we were to move the assessments by 20% again next year, but the CPI is 2%, let's say, I'm, I'm just making these numbers up, but let's just, for hypothetical sake, the assessment would exceed the cap, and that person would be capped, and in 10, 15 years, should they continue to be resident, continue to be eligible, they may, assuming the market continues to increase, enjoy a cap that is similar to some of the caps that exist now, where there's some distance in between. So the longer you've been in your home, typically, the larger your cap difference or cap advantage is, because over years, it's cumulative on the assumption that market increases are generally greater than the CPI. But that's not always the case, but sort of generally or trended over time, it typically is.
And do these people have to apply for the cap? It's done automatically?
It's all automatic.
In a year's time?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And all, all of the requirements are on our website, so there's an extensive amount of detail on cap. I don't think, I, I want to go into it in this presentation, but you have to be a Nova Scotia resident, it has to be less than three units, and it can't be owned by a business. I'd say those are the three most like critical pieces. There's a couple other nuts and bolts, but all of the information is there for anyone who wants to look at it, or just give us a call, and we're happy to talk through it as well.
Thank you. That was very helpful.
And, and just for some additional information, CPI over the past few years, typically it was running at, well, actually, it was running at 1%, 0.3%. Then as COVID kicked in, it was 5.4%. And then the most inflationary year in 2023, it was 7.7%. Now that's back down to 3.2%. We don't know where it's going to be next October for next year's role, but the other interesting part is in 2020 before COVID, you were in the 66% range where 60%, 66% of residential properties were eligible for the cap. With those high market increases and the lower CPI increases, more people went into the cap, were eligible for the cap, 89% of 89% of the municipality impairments' residential properties are eligible for the cap.
Yeah.
This 2024 roll.
It's always that distance between CPI and market. The market flattens, but inflation continues to be fat, quick-moving, year over year, and this is costing goods and services for Nova Scotia. So if you had a CPI of 5%, but an average increase in a municipality of 5% on the market side, you may see some properties actually come off the cap. Because if they had purchased recently, it's always the lower of the two numbers. So if your assessed value is the lower of the two, that's going to be the starting point for your cap in the future years. It always resets to the lower number. It doesn't mean that you're not capped, you're still eligible, it's just not necessarily of any benefit to you in that scenario. And we saw that happen sort of throughout the province in sort of the 2017, 18 time period, when we were seeing flatter market activity throughout the province. But certainly now that we've seen these, you know, very significant increases to residential property values due to COVID primarily, and lots of immigration or migration to the province, as everyone's aware, it certainly has changed things again on the cap, and seen a lot more residential property come onto the cap system automatically.
Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham.
Thank you. Excellent presentation and excellent questions as well. And you may have answered the scenario already, but so if in a given year, a property is eligible for the cap, and the market increase in value of that property, or series of properties, is lower than the inflation rate, so let's say the inflation rate is 2%, and the market increase is, sorry, let's say the inflation rate, yeah, is 2%, is 5% in the, I've got it backwards, sort of, the inflation rate is 5% and the market increase is 2%, would the CPI apply to that, or would the market increase apply?
So, great question.
Do you catch up?
It's a bit tricky to explain, because it depends on the cap scenario. So in a scenario where a property already enjoys a significant cap advantage, that greater CPI would be applied to the cap and would result in that change in taxable assessment. So let's say you have a $200,000 market value assessment, and you have a $100,000 cap, because you've been in the property for 15, 20 years. So if the CPI is 5%, your taxable would be 105,000, even though we only applied 2% to the market, so you'd only be at 204,000, right, for your assessed value. So the increase to the assessed value would actually be less than the increase to your taxable assessment, but because the cap is still of an advantage to you, it's still much, much, much lower in this scenario, you'd still pay on the cap, but that percentage would be the CPI. The scenario I was talking about where you come off the cap is like, if you've purchased recently, and you're very, very close, like, your cap is 200,000, your market's 205, and then we apply those two percentages, and the lower of the two is actually your assessment. Another example is folks who've had a demolition or destruction due to a fire, for instance, on their property. They're now, in 2024, if they lost their home to a fire last year, would be assessed for land, and they still remain eligible for the cap program and will have a cap. But because that taxable assessment, because the assessed value's lower, it's only reflecting land, that's the new starting point.
Thanks so much.
No problem.
Counselor Daniel Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So just a couple, I'm hoping, easier questions for you, because the common question I always get is, after they get, people get their assessment, is the big thing is that they haven't seen an assessor visit their property. And because of your presentation today, I get that any established property is pretty much based on market value. So, you know, the only people you're going out to are the building permits and such. So if a person goes and applies for building permit and adds like a garage or something on their house, or a barn, what takes place to their cap? Like, how does that affect it, like, cap property? Because you were mentioning, like, you know...
Great question. I think I can answer this one pretty fairly easily. And I think you're absolutely correct, Counselor Allen, regarding the trigger. So we don't, with 650,000 roughly properties in the province, we don't have the resources to visit every single property annually. We maintain a database of property data for each property, and we use a lot of tools in the office as well, such as annual overflight imagery, to determine the physical state of property. However, there are many triggers that would have us make a site visit, and a building permit is a great example of one of those triggers. Another would be an appeal, or a phone call from a property owner saying, "You've got to come and take a look at this, it's not, you know, sort of consistent with what I'm seeing on the assessment notice." So with a garage, for instance, in a scenario where you're adding something, so there's something physically being added to a property which is caft, we adjust the cap for that as well, with what's called a construction adjustment. That construction adjustment is based on construction costs from our nationally-recognized costing service, adjusted for location. And that's the same across the province. So if you add a garage in Yarmouth, it's the same as if you add a garage in Cape Breton, regarding your cap, regarding how it changes your assessed value. Everyone can imagine that the sort of contributory value of a garage in Halifax, or in Woolfield, or in Yarmouth, or in Port Hoxbury might be different, depending on the market forces that work in that area, and how typical is that garage for that market? Do you already have two garages on your property? Is it the third? All of these questions. But what we would do is make a site visit typically for something like a garage, or review details we receive from the municipal permit office around this. If we had something like the size and the permit status, we know it's completed, talk with the owner, understand the construction. We may not require a site visit, but if it was a larger or more extensive renovation or construction project, of course, we'd typically make a site visit. And your cap would get that construction adjustment. And then again, that construction adjustment comes after the CPI. So in the following assessment roll year, we would add the CPI to your previous cap, and then add the construction adjustment to that. So basically, a cost per square foot, if you imagine there would be a cost per square foot for garage, cost per square foot for a, you know, bedroom, bathroom, addition to the side of a home, outbuilding, debt, whatever it is, that would get added to your cap, and then the final number becomes your capped assessment for that year. And then we would still compare the two, so your market assessed value and your cap value, and whatever's the lower of the two is going to be your taxable assessment. Does that answer the question?
Yep.
So anytime there's something physically added, your cap changes, but it changes by the cost of construction rather than by the market contributory value. They're sort of two separate things.
So the only time cap actually gets canceled, like, and removed from the property is when there's a transaction?
I would say when there's an eligibility change. So if you put your house into the name of your numbered company, because you had some, there was a good accounting reason to do it for another reason, then you'd come off the cap. Or if you transferred a property to someone who's non-resident in the province, that would lose the cap. So there are a few different changes to eligibility that can occur, but if you continue to meet the eligibility requirements, the only way that that cap will be removed, short of there being a change to the legislation by the provincial government, would be selling the property on the open market. You can sell to your immediate family member and keep the cap.
So what about an instance, and I don't want to take up all the time, but what about an instance of someone's house burning down, like, not in the wildfire? If someone has a house fire and it burns down, they were on cap, the new place is built, obviously because it's new construction, it's going to be valued higher.
That's right.
So their new cap obviously is, I shouldn't say obviously, so where do they, where do they land with the new...
That's correct. And it's a question that we frequently had with property owners in Hammond's Plains as well, and with Shelburne, and we've had a review of the cap legislation, and the cap legislation is silent on total loss due to an uncontrolled circumstance, like what some folks would call an act of God, right? So something out of your control. There's nothing in the legislation that currently allows us to keep the old cap. So currently, what we've committed to is that when someone reconstructs, that same cap advantage will be preserved. So if you had a $100,000 cap and a $200,000 assessment, that's a 50% advantage. So if your new assessment is $400,000, your cap would be 200,000 or less. So that percentage is preserved. However, it is possible, in the current situation, that your taxable assessment would change. And what that is, is kind of, if you imagine often when folks rebuild, what's built is very different than what was there before. So that's a sort of a big question mark for us around the treatment of those properties. It's sort of, it's not exactly the same as it was. It's also situation-based, and if there's an individual property owner or constituent you have that has an inquiry about that, certainly I'd be happy to have someone take a look at it, and make sure that we've been able to preserve that, but that's sort of the current policy on it. So it would be added the same as any other new construction, and then we'd make that analysis to say, has this percentage been preserved the same as it was before?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep, yep. Thank you.
I see no more questions?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
From staff, I do have one final thing in regards to the Assessment Act, the appeal period. Is that mandated by the province, correct?
Correct.
In the Act.
In the Act, yes.
Yep.
All right, well, thank you very much, Paul and Rod. I'm sure we could spend hours here. I'm sure there's some questions.
Cap is always farther on.
Always a popular one. But thank you very much.
Yes, and I want to thank staff too as well, because we've got a good working relations with them. And as Rod said, if there's anything at all, if you want to send it through the CAO or through Jenny, the municipal clerk, if you have questions, send it through, they'll get it to me, they'll get it, I'll get it to Rod if I need Rod, and we'll go from there. And if the municipality had any questions about properties, and is this one assessed correctly or not assessed correctly, we get those inquiries too, and we'll go and take a look at it.
Yep. Yeah, we're always happy to chat and happy to keep the dialogue going. So thanks, everyone, for having us, and appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Counselor Allen actually asked a question that I didn't have the answer to, so thank you very much.
Great. Thanks so much.
Trevor?
Thank you. All right, item 6.2, the war vessen post there. Will you land it on? The microphone is on, and you're ready?
Can you see it? You can't see it, can you? No. But then they won't be able to see it, so.
That's okay, that's okay.
That's quite all right.
That's fine, yep.
Yeah, that's quite all right. Yeah, like, the camera would be facing towards me, so I'd much rather that the public see it.
Over here, Jenny, right here, yep.
Thank you so much for having us here today. I'm Yolande Donaldson. I'm a member of the Wedgeport Legion, and with me today, in the gallery, I have Bob Guerin, and he is one of our Korean vets. We've been working on a project since October to remember all the men and women, Canadian men and women who served in the Canadian Forces, died as a result of the war, and are buried elsewhere in other countries, did never return home. The First World War, Second World War, Korean War, most of our veterans are buried away. And the others after that, they had a chance to repatriate them, whereas they didn't, because of the numbers. So we wanted to remember them, and we wanted to make an impact, so we decided to do a picture, and the focus of the picture is the cemetery that you see in front of us. It is the cemetery of Beni Surmer, the military cemetery, and just looking at it just brings you right into this picture. There is an impact. There is a bigger impact when you hear the stories of the men and women that are surrounding that picture. This cemetery has 2048 graves. Out of the 2048, 2044 are Canadian, mainly from D-Day and the beginning stages of the War of Normandy. There's three that are from the United Kingdom, and one was a French resistant fighter. And this cemetery is one cemetery, military cemetery, out of 23,000 military cemeteries and more memorials around the world. So that is, just that alone is mind-boggling. So we added to the picture the national symbol of the Canadian maple leaf, and the poppy, which everybody knows, as well as the words "remember them." This picture also comes in French, because our goal was to put them in schools as well. And so in French, it does say "jamais oublié." The men and women that you see around there are in the shape of a circle, and they're there for a reason, because it represents the dead man's penny. And the dead man's penny is actually, it looks like a true penny, except it's larger, it's about four and a half inches wide and a quarter inch thick. And it was given during and after the First World War to the families of those who had members that had died as a result of the war. It was a memorial plaque for them. So that's the reason we chose, and actually, it was also given to people of British or British Empire, which is where Canada fit, in the British Empire. So we have this picture, and anybody can purchase one of these pictures. This is not a fundraiser for the Legion. Whatever it will cost for the picture is actually what it costs to print them. And our goal is to put them in as many schools, which we have succeeded. There has been a company, or several companies, that have graciously donated, and every single school in Yarmouth County is going to receive one, whether the French School Board or the English School Board. Along with this comes a packet of information, all the information on these men and women, the stories that I will tell you on these men and women is in the packet that they will receive. However, their stories are much longer than what I have time to tell you. So I will begin on the top left-hand corner to you, closest to the warden. He is John Angus Jacar. He's a World War II veteran from Little River Harbour. He was captured in the Battle of Hong Kong as a prisoner of war, and he was taken to prisoner-of-war camp, to another camp, to another camp, until finally, after five or six camps, they had a heavy snowstorm, and the roof collapsed, and he was killed, including eight of them. He is buried in Yokohama War Cemetery in Japan, and he was 22 years old. Next to him, we have Elwyn Herman Goodwin, a Korean war vet from Argyle Sound. He was killed in Operation Commando, climbing up to Hill 187. He is buried in the United Nations Cemetery in South Korea. He was 22. Next, we have Robert Francis Boudreau from Wedgeport. He was severely, he's a Second World War veteran. He was severely wounded in France and died later that day, and he is actually buried in this particular cemetery. He was 20 years old. Chester Pennell, the last one on the top, is a World War I veteran. He's from Yarmouth. He was the number-two Construction Battalion, or the Construction, yes, Battalion. He took hill on the SS southbound on their way to Liverpool. He was taken to Kirkdale or Liverpool Hospital, where he died of pneumonia, and he is buried in Kirkdale Cemetery in Liverpool, and he was 19. On my left, the first one at the top, is Freeman Hector Grant. He is from Carlton. He was killed in action at the Battle of Ortona in Italy, and he is buried at Morro River Canadian Cemetery in Ortona in Italy. He was 17, not old enough to join. Underneath him, we have John Jeremiah Boudreau, World War II vet. He was the leading seaman aboard the HMCS Raccoon in the St. Lawrence River when they were torpedoed by the U-boat 165, and his body was never found. The entire crew was lost. His name is on a memorial in a park in Halifax. He was 32. On the bottom, the last one on the bottom, on the left-hand side, is M.E. Gower. We don't have his real name, but he is, he served with our veteran that is here today. He's from Briar Island, and he was a gunner. He served in World War II, but after the Korean War, he was sent to Germany as a special force to prevent the Russians from invading Germany. He was found dead in a canal, and he is buried in Hanover Military Cemetery, and he was 32 years old. On the right-hand side, at the top, we have Mary... On the right-hand side, at the top, we have Mary Mamie Muse, World War II veteran from Spring Haven. She was in the Canadians, in the Canadian Women's Army Corps as a truck driver. She was in an army vehicle that rolled over in water in Sydney, Nova Scotia, and she drowned. She actually is buried in the Catholic Cemetery at St. Agnes Church in Quinnen. The reason we put her there is that she is the only known woman casualty of the Second World War from Yarmouth County, count, town, and county. She was 23. Philip Joseph Jacar, World War II veteran from Spring Haven. He was wounded in action in Italy and died later that day. And he is buried in the Casino War Cemetery in Italy. He was 23. And last but not least, Stillman Elton Cisco, World War II veteran from Yarmouth. He was killed in action in France as a result of shrapnel. And he is buried in Brettville Surles Cemetery in France, and he was 21. So I suspect that you are as touched as I was when I began working on this project. And like I said, our goal was to put it in as many buildings, schools, any place where people gather for funerals, for weddings, for whatever the occasion is. Because this is not something that we want to set in a closet and haul out for Remembrance Day. This is something that we would like to see year-round as a remembrance to these men and women that were lost. The, the picture, like I said, it comes in two sizes. This is the largest size. It's 20, 36 inches wide by 26 inches high. It sells for $175 plus tax. The smaller one is 30 inches wide by 22 high, and it sells for $125 plus tax. And like I said, it is printed here in Yarmouth. We make no money off of this. We just are doing this as a remembrance project. It's very easy to hang. If you purchase the little mirror hangers, they're clear. You just screw them in the wall, and there's a slot to slip the pack, the picture in. And then you can put two more at the top. It is printed on die-bond material and that, and then the picture, and then laminated. So it is fire retardant. So therefore, it's able to go in buildings, in schools, anywhere where the fire marshal will not come after you. I guess if, our, our goal would be, we'd like to see one in this building, of course. And I can leave my contact number and my email if that is something that you are interested in doing. Or if you have any, I know that, that councillors may have, I'm not quite sure how it works in the municipality of Yarmouth, but in the municipality of Argyle, councillors have a certain district, and there's often a community hall in those districts. So we were hoping to see them through the community halls and anywheres around where your district is concerned. Thank you. Oh, may I just add? The information for these men and women came from the War Time Heritage Association website. And like I said, this, that information comes with the package. So when you receive the picture, you will receive that information as well, ready to just put in a binder. So if anybody ever wants to read up on them, it's there. Thank you.
Questions? Deputy Warden, Trevor Cunningham.
Thank you, Ms. McDonaldson. Very, very good presentation. Good to see you again.
Thank you, good to see you.
I've missed you.
Oh, thank you.
And thank you very much, Mr. Guerin, for your service. It's very much appreciated. And I guess I'm going to recommend that perhaps staff could go back and, and, and look at, you know, placement, because there's, there's, there's various ways. I mean, obviously, the big one is, I think everybody probably would want something like that in the building. But you, you mentioned some of our community buildings, some.
Yes.
One we own, many of the, many of them we don't.
Right.
But maybe some recommendations from staff at the next council meeting as to what we might, might do moving forward and perhaps even, you know, our, our staff could work, work with you sort of during that time to come up with some recommendation. Yeah, is, does that sound reasonable, Mr. Chair, through, through you to the C A O?
Yeah, what we could do is we could bring it back to the next committee of the whole. We could do, do it there because typically, we don't make motions or much direction during presentations, but we can certainly bring it back to the committee of the whole meeting coming up.
Yeah, I mean, rather than wait, waiting the whole month, I mean, maybe we just have a consensus of, of council. I don't think it would be too, to have staff. And it's not a money issue that we're making a motion on or not, so to have staff bring it to the next council meeting.
Okay. So you made that a motion, correct?
A motion, yeah.
Okay, do I have a second, or seconded by Counselor Allen? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Yeah, that's just to bring it forward to the next, next council meeting. Thank you. Counselor Patty Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for your presentation and also thank you for your service. I'm always interested in learning about those who have fought for us Canadians. Are there other members of different regiments that are buried? Are there a lot more people from this area that are buried?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, and, and so what is happening with, is there something that's, because this is a, a small number, is there some way that those people will be recognized as well? And how did you choose who would be on this board?
We basically chose the local area, Yarmouth County. And some of the people that would be in our legion, like where we, we serve from our legion. But we wanted a variety, so we went with World War I, World War II, Korean War, and, and that woman, Mary Muse. Other than that, it was basically, we had, we could have chosen, there was hundreds of them. And you have to make a decision. So we, we went with the, the largest variety that we thought we could have on that one picture. And it covered an area wide enough from Briar Island to Argyle Sound. So that's pretty fair, large area. If you started and you wanted one just for Yarmouth, you probably could. There's all kinds, I'm sure. You could have maybe more than one, maybe several. But then it brings into, we had to, to make those decisions. Where are we going to cut back? How far are we going to go with this? And, and, and it's gone beyond where we could ever imagine.
Okay, so, thank you. So in other words, if someone wanted to take on the project to make a list or a website or something to recognize all of those other members that could be done? Or is that, is there something already existing that shows?
We don't, we don't intend to do that. But if you go to the War Time Heritage Association website, the list is there, from Nova Scotia and Yarmouth County for World War I, World War II, and Korean. The list is there, whether they're buried here or buried away. You will find that there.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I see no other questions, so I'll make a comment. Please leave your contact information. That's actually something that I'd bring forward to the fire department in Carlton, which is right next door to the Carlton Senate House.
Yes.
So I think that would be a great position.
Yes.
To put that in. I can certainly bring that forward to, to the fire department.
I'll leave you a couple pages here.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much.
And that way Jenny can have one. The fire department's.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think that's a great spot where it's a public area and lots of different groups rented out.
Yes.
And I think that would be a great place for a learning environment. And, and last but not least, Mr. Bob Guerin, thank you very much for your service. It's much appreciated.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say that this project is for the boys that never come home and girls. There's nobody that we're dealing with that's buried in Canada. You have to be buried away in a war cemetery. That's the only ones we're looking at. Because they're the ones we never think of. I, I know since we put, I, I'm in veterans' place, and since we put this in veterans' place, I've looked at this and, and thought about them more than I ever have. Because every time you go by that and it says, "Remember them," something clicks. And you remember somebody, whether it's a, a relative or what it is. And if we can get those out there, because our concern is veterans, is that if we don't do it, who's coming behind us? You know, because there, there's something going on all over the world. I don't know how much longer they can bury people in tournaments. You know, but please, if you've got a chance to, to honor a veteran, not just on Veterans' Day or, you know, but any day, you get a chance to say, "Thank you for your, thank you for your service." Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Rod.
Maybe we'll stand, if we can, and honor a moment of silence for these men and women who didn't come home.
All right, maybe we, we should be standing for a moment of silence for the men and women who did not come home during the, the past World Wars and other conflicts. Thank you very much, everyone. And once again, thank you for your service. Deputy Warden, could you please take over the chair for the, to start the next presentation? Yeah, could we, actually, what I'm going to do is I'm going to call a five minutes, five minutes recess. Moved by Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham, seconded by Counselor Hilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. Just a note of process, Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham had called for a motion for five minutes recess, so it's seconded by Counselor Nick Hilton, just to make sure it's clear in the meeting minutes. All right, moving on, item 6.3, Director of Development Service. We have with us today, Mr. Derek Robertson. Your microphone is on and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, as you said, I'm the Director of the Development Services here at the municipality of Yarmouth. I'm just going to run through a quick presentation, a quick update on where the development department stands today. So starting with building permits and looking at the time period from January 1st to May 31st of 2023, we had 113 permits issued for a total of $10,185,340. This year, in 2024, we have 111 permits with a total value of $11,265,753. In 2023, 19 of those permits were for single, single-family dwellings. In 2024, it's 18. We currently have one $1.2 million industrial building permit on the go. That's for Acadian Sea Plants in the Airport Industrial Complex. So yeah, that, that actually makes up a big part of the difference. Things are roughly in line with last year's numbers. Then moving on to subdivision applications for the same time period of January 1st to May 31st, 2023, we had 23 applications, 18 completed. 2024, we have 15 applications, 10 completed. That is a reduction, but we only have one large surveyor and company here in Yarmouth that handles the majority of our subdivisions. And they're working on two large projects right now, which have private roads that require engineering, as well as road owners' associations, that tend to take a little longer and a little more manpower. So I think that's part of the reason we're seeing a reduction in the number. There's also multiple older files that were put on hold through the end of last year that are seeing new developments to bring them in line with our current regulations that I think there was some teething issues. that I think there were some teething issues with the new land use bylaw. So, we're seeing things moving on smoothly again. So, that's it for subdivision. Fire inspection. We continue to identify additional buildings that require inspection, just investigating uses and determining what actually requires inspection and does not. At the same time, we're steadily progressing through the necessary inspections and bringing ourselves closer to up to date there. Remediation of identified violations is progressing well. Just anecdotally, most people are happy to make changes. Everybody wants their building to be safe. So, things are progressing without a lot of conflict, which is excellent. Also, our fire inspector Tara is the zone rep for FIANS now, the Fire Inspectors Association of Nova Scotia. She's really enjoying it. There's a lot of learning opportunities involved. And it also puts her on the, on the board members list. And that has afforded her a lot of opportunity to collaborate with other people in the area, other fire inspectors, which is always a great way to develop your understanding and better the department's knowledge. So, that's been a huge help already. And then, for bylaw enforcement, you guys get frequent updates. So, I won't, you know, we won't go into any details there, but most files are progressing well through just cooperation with the individuals, which is always the goal. So, Building Official Level One and Building Official Level Two certifications. We have Mark as our newest building official. He's currently an associate member of the Nova Scotia Building Officials Association. He's progressing through his courses quite well. And that has actually been, the cost of those courses has been sponsored by the Nova Scotia Building Officials Association through a provincial grant. So, that's money that we've saved in, at this point. His final intern course is scheduled for October. So, at that point, he'll just need his necessary inspections and experience to qualify as a residential inspector. That requires quite a large number of inspections. He's progressing through that as much as possible within our municipality, given what inspections are available to him. We're currently investigating some options to speed up that process to try and get him to a point where he can better, better help our second building official and take some of the load off of him so that he can focus on some of the bigger projects. And on to our second building official. He's currently working on his status as a Level Two, as Level Two certification. That allows specific commercial buildings and complex systems. He's getting quite close. And actually, to connect it back to the Acadian Sea Plants building, he's going to use that project to round out his inspections, get the experience required and try to move towards actually closing up and obtaining that certification around the same time that building is completed, which is hoping to be done this year. So, that's kind of it for our day to day in the department. We've got some other projects we're working on. I'm heading the Cape Four Shu Sea Level Rise/Storm Surge Impact Assessment Project. Currently have a draft version of an RFP and will be moving forward with that. I'm also helping out the Director of Recreation with the Extra Transportation Master Plan, specifically trying to create some linkage back to the subdivision bylaw amendments that you guys would be familiar with that went through recently. And then, finally, working with our communications staff to try and put together a watercourse buffer pamphlet that is more up to date and in line with the current land use bylaw regulations and including the new Lakeside Residential Zone. So, that's what I have here, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Boy, oh, Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham.
Thank you for the thorough presentation. And just, I thought maybe, you know, given interest rates and all the rest of it and construction costs that, and that may be, that construction may have diminished a little bit, but it doesn't look like, like, I mean, the January 1st through May 31st period looks as all the activities very, very similar to last year, which is pretty robust. Is that, is that the case or is there something not seen in the numbers?
No, it's, it's quite close. I was a little, April was a little slow, but I guess it was the weather because we're, yeah, we're busy again.
That's good.
Yeah.
It's good for, for the residents in the municipality and to have some additional, growth always, always helps. Yeah, thank you.
I do have one question, Derek, in regard to the permits issued in 2023, where there was 113, in 2024, there was 111 permits issued. Are all those new permits or those ones that were not completed during the 2023 year and just where you have to get a permit every year, I'm assuming?
They're, yeah, they're all new, yes. So, the renewals aren't included in that number.
Okay.
Yep.
Simple question, simple answer. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Chair, so that permit, those permit numbers are for that period of time, January to May. They're not annual permit numbers.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just to be clear.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much, Derek. Appreciate your time.
Thanks, everyone.
Derek, do you mind turning off that microphone, please? Thank you.
Moving on, correspondence for action, there is none. Correspondence for information, we have the Contract Policing Assessment, the Yarmouth Whitecaps Grant Report from 2023, Lakes and Districts Fire Department Annual Report for 2024. This one here, I'm going to have to stop on. Items YCMHS Graduation Ceremony Invitation. Many of you may not know that Jenny had asked me if I was attending that. I guess I can formally answer here, yes, I can attend that. But there's also another invitation there from the Perrin Bar School, which is on the 26th at seven o'clock. I cannot make that one. So, if any of you are available to attend that, please notify Jenny that you'll be attending on behalf of the Municipality District of Yarmouth to Perrin Bar in Tuscany.
Twenty-sixth is our council meeting.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why you can't.
That's why I can't attend. That's why I can't attend. I knew there was something, but I couldn't put my finger on it. It's what happens when you have 14 different things on the go. The next one is the invitation to the REN 10-year anniversary. I'm going to try to attend that. I haven't responded yet. The next one is the invitation to the Meadowfields Community School Playground Project. I cannot make that one. Counselor Herbert? No, we didn't have to RSVP, but I cannot attend. And then, a response from Premier Tim Houston, the federal taxation burden. Any comments on any of those? If not, no old business, new business. 9.1, the Draft 2024-2025 Business Plan. Madam CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, counsel, in your package is basically a written formation of the financial plan you've laid out as it relates to the strategic plan. So, this will be the last business plan for the current strategic plan based on the four pillars we've been working on over the last four years. So, just on a very high level, I want to touch on, I guess by pillar, some of the activities that you have directed the municipality undertake this year. So, with respect to the strategic direction, the economy, we're going to continue to do what we can to support our partners around the development of the labor force. So, we'll be participating with the Western REN's Connector Program. We'll be participating on the local immigration partnership. And we'll be staying focused on asset management and working with, on the municipal housing strategy. With respect to fisheries, under the economy, we're going to continue to engage with our partners across the tri-counties on any opportunities we can to advance and diversify the fishery sector. Under Tourism, Culture and Heritage, we are working on taking a look at the development of a program to create a series of landmarks across the municipality with a specific focus on showcasing economic heritage. We are very proud to be partnering with the Town of Yarmouth to sponsor the Congrès Mondial. And together, the town and the municipality are the presenting sponsor for that event. We will continue to promote our self-guided heritage tour. And we are working on the sea level rise and the storm surge effect out at our Cape Four Shu site. The Self-Service Project is a major priority of council and we're continuing to engage with Build Nova Scotia and the Western REN to make sure we are, A, advocating and lobbying for the project and B, taking advantage of any opportunities to advance the interest of the District of Yarmouth inside that program. We are, excuse me, on track to finish the Rural Internet Project by quarter three of this fiscal year. And I know one project in particular that was not scheduled until October was actually completed in May. So, we may come in early on that, which is technically still late. But anyway. Under your strategic direction, people, again, under talent supply, we're going to continue to work externally with the Western REN and we're going to work with the Chamber on the Doctor Recruitment and Retention Program. Internally, we're going to continue to invest and support and try to improve morale with our own staff. We're going to continue to implement the action plan as a result of year one of the Employee Engagement Survey. And we're going to round out year two and get our trending done. And we're going to work on formal succession planning again this year to protect the municipality from the tsunami of retirements that are, seem to be prolific around us. Accessibility is a major project for the municipality. We're going to continue to move through the design phase of the accessibility upgrades to this building and the Rotary Building and hopefully receive approval from council to move into the construction phase of that project. We have a significant project underway with our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee, trying to get information from the Province of Nova Scotia to help inform the development of a plan to reduce racism and hate inside and outside of the municipality. We're looking at social procurement. You took a peek at your procurement policy. And we're taking a look at how we can leverage municipal investments to continue to support a social aspect of our local economy. Placemaking, you have a whole section in your grants program around creating a sense of place in the municipality. And we're just going to continue to monitor and recommend improvements where necessary around that. Around active living and recreation, it's focused on the Active Transportation Plan as well as investments in the Mariner Center Expansion and a new recreation agreement, which is currently being drafted for council's review. We're going to lean heavily into asset management this year. So, Danny Jackson has done a lot of work with AIM Network. And at the director's level, we're going to begin to take risk of failure and consequence of failure data and overlay that into the reporting to council so that as council looks at the 360 degrees of any conversation around assets and investments, you can balance that against your responsibilities with your current inventory of assets. Around protecting the environment, we're going to continue to look for opportunities that may exist to reduce the demand on Nova Scotia Power's existing infrastructure in our power grid and possibly generate some wealth for the municipality. We're going to continue to encourage residents to take advantage of the PACE program. And of course, we want to ensure that as development continues to grow that we support the development of residential dwellings where there's access to onsite water. Cybersecurity is a major concern for everybody around the world. And we're going to continue to adopt our best practices with training and data transfer and in-house control over, over our systems. Under inter-municipal agreements, which we have more than 20 of, in order to deliver the programs and services that we do to the municipal residents, it's around the Yarmouth Recreation Agreement, the Airport Agreement, and to make sure we continue to put money away to fund the municipality's share of the contribution to the capital expansion at the Mariner Center. Accessible meetings of council. So, there is going to be significant improvements in this room to support more accessibility to people to view and participate and be at meetings. We're going to improve the capacity in this room. We're going to improve the audiovisual equipment and hopefully create a better experience for council and the public. As I said, asset management, we're going to lean heavily into that as we move forward. Under regional collaboration and governance, I've talked about the agreements in the Mariner Center Program and the Congrès Mondial. You have an aggressive legislative agenda. We're moving through that. We did amend your priorities. You amended your priorities last month. And so, we're going to take a look at some new bylaw work that we weren't anticipating. We're going to deliver a reliable, safe election. We're also recommending that council approve work around post-election council orientation program for those who are elected in October, as well as strategic planning for that new council. And then, there's significant work underway around emergency preparedness. So, council will recall that the Government of Nova Scotia has taken emergency management out of the Department of Municipal Affairs and is standing up a separate department. There will be quite a bit of work around that. I think that the standards and the best practices are going to be elevated. And so, you can expect to hear more through your Regional Emergency Management Executive Committee around work that will be done there. And so, Mr. Chair, I submit that to council for recommendation and approval.
What is the pleasure of council? Do you wish to move this forward to regular council? Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham.
Yeah, the document that our CAOs produced for us, Strategic Plan, Business Plan, 2024-2025, the draft. Let's, let's forward that to our next regularly scheduled council meeting to, for potential approval.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Sherry Hurlbert. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. All right, item 9.2 was an addition. CEO Victoria Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, under the direction of council, the municipality released a request for proposal just last week around housing. As the housing conversation has developed across the country, this council's perspective on that has been around leaning into the municipal lane and providing supports and responses that are within the municipal jurisdiction. So, a lot of work was undertaken when the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw was amended to smoothen pathways to build residential inventory in the municipality. Things like allowing more units as of right, around allowing four stories in certain areas where we've never allowed that before. We've always had a responsive development office. We can turn around building permits within days if the right information is provided. Building inspections are available usually within two to three days, sometimes same day. So, we didn't have a whole lot of work to do there. So, the next step that council asked us to take a look at was to take the Turner and Drake analysis that was conducted by the province last year and try to do some modeling to determine where we can expect housing to be needed, wanted, required across the municipality over the next 25 years. And so, the idea was that council would use that information, that modeling, to try and understand where there would be demand for infrastructure, for programs, for services, and begin to lay a framework for strategically making those investments through the Capital Investment Plan. So, that request for proposals was written and it was released last week. Almost at the very same time, the Minister, Federal Minister of Housing, Minister Sean Fraser, who's a Nova Scotia Member of Parliament, spoke at the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. And he talked about a desire at the federal level to move away from issue-specific or project-specific responses to things communities need to try to support holistic growth in communities, which appears to be what council's trying to do with this request for proposal. Council's trying to take modeling information and guide stewardship decisions for investments around programs, services and infrastructure to be future-ready. So, I think it was Wayne Gretzky who said, "You don't skate to where the puck is, you skate to where the puck is going to be." And so, my recommendation to council is, is... And so, my recommendation to council is, is that council write to the minister's office and point out our request for proposal and how it is a bit unique in the housing space right now, and invite the office to a conversation with council around possibly doing a demonstration project to support the work needed to plan for that future community.
Counselor Patty Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I too attended the FCM, and in almost every presentation, the topic was housing, no matter what. So, I think that's a fabulous idea. I think that it's much easier in a city to start housing projects, and it's a little bit more challenging, I believe, in rural communities to know exactly what it is that we need and how we can benefit our constituents, and so I support the recommendation of our CAO, and I make a motion that we do write to MP Sean Fraser's office, and I, to be, this to be, motion to be forwarded to the regular council meeting.
Okay, motion on the floor. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item number 10, any public comments? All right, we have one, Mr. Dale Mullin. If you would step forward, hit the red button on the microphone, I'll turn it on, and you will have three minutes. There you go, Dale. You have the floor.
Good afternoon, Warden and councilors. Back in 1992, a Canadian writer by the name of William D. Gerdner wrote a book, bestselling book, called The War Against the Family. He knowingly pointed out some of the terrible things that were about to follow for Canadians, especially middle-class Canadians. I would like to reword his title to the War Against the Middle Class. The Yarmouth Council, from what we have seen, seem fully engaged in this, and that's very Examples of being against our citizens could go back to our recent land use bylaw, where the majority clearly pointed out they wanted no such thing, and yet, the majority of the councilors right here now voted for that bylaw. We've heard nothing from our presentation about lowering spending and lowering our tax rate. Perhaps that's in the works, but we've heard no response to that at all. We've heard nothing as a response to our request, and the citizens' requests, we presented you with paper ballots, or, excuse me, with signatures, requesting paper ballots. We've heard nothing about that since. Possibly some decision is made, but that is not doing, that is not serving the citizens of this community. That's not what you're here for. Most of the things that this council invests in, as they put it, spends our money, in other words, are not for the middle class. Heating rebates, tax rebates, there's no place in there for the middle-class people that are paying the majority of the money into this. Many times, we're referred to what the municipal or the Federal Canadian Municipal Group want, or what the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities want. We really don't care. We did not elect those people to represent us. We don't care what they want, and we expect this council to speak out against those people. Sometimes, we're told, well, we got some money because of those people. They didn't give you money. They returned some of the money that you gave to them. In other words, if you will do this, they will give you money. That's extortion, people. That's not representing the people, that's extortion. We feel that this council should distance themselves from these federations and start serving the people of Yarmouth. It's time to represent the citizens. I do not feel these councilors, this council, are doing that. When you appeal always to what the province wants, to what the federal government wants, to what the UN wants, the WEF wants, and a lot of these things are, I know that it's been pointed out, that naming the WEF was just conspiracy theories. Take a look at what we're doing now that the WEF has initiated. It's not for the good of the citizens. Thank you very much for your attention.
All right, the next thing on the agenda is in-camera items. I need a motion to go into camera. Moved by Counselor Patty Durkey, seconded by Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.